On the record now.
Bye Dave.
All right, good evening, everyone. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given. And that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA ten colon four dash six at sec of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. This meeting can be accessed by using the WebEx link that's been published on the website. Nora, please call the roll.
Berkowitz, Jaskowicz.
Here.
Kaplan.
Here.
Lazzarella.
Here.
Parek.
Here.
Ready.
Present.
Snyder.
Here.
Willens. Willens. We also have with us our board.
I'm muted here.
Uh. I do not believe we have um. Mr. Chadwick with us yet. We have our board engineer, Mr. Holloway, and our board attorney, Mr. King.
Present.
Okay, and uh. Announcement, this announcement is for the members of the public who have joined this meeting on their computer and selected to use the phone option for audio. If you dialed into the system using your phone, you will not be able to raise your hand to comment. To have the ability to raise your hand and comment, you must do the following. Leave the meeting, rejoin the meeting. When selecting audio, choose the option to have the system call you and input the phone number you wish to be called on. This option will pair your computer with your phone and will allow you to raise your hand if you wish to comment during the public session.
Okay, um. Normally, we would do the pledge of allegiance at this point, but there are no flags to salute, so we will skip that. Um, we have two resolutions to approve tonight. The first one to be twenty-two twenty. And a motion?
So moved.
Second Snyder.
Hey Nora.
Jaskowicz.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Snyder.
This is Zoom, correct? Or this is not Zoom?
No, this is twenty-two twenty.
Okay, got it. Yes, yes. Thank you very much.
That is. Willens.
Yes.
Okay, we're on to the second resolution, application twenty-two seventeen, Cindy Hassan, seven-seven-seven Vale Road. Block seven oh six, lot three, zone R three, see variance to construct a driveway expansion. Contrary to section four thirty-two seventy-five acts in section four thirty, thirty-five, column thirteen. Column thirteen.
I get a motion?
Yes, motion Jaskowitz. Again, ready.
Hey Nora.
Jaskowicz.
Yes.
Parek.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Willens.
Yes.
Great. Thank you. At this point, is there anyone who wishes to speak to the board about business not on tonight's agenda? I can't see anybody, so I'll rely on you Nora.
Uh, there are no hands raised.
Okay. I'll close that part of the meeting and move into the single agenda item for tonight, application number nineteen fifty-six. Um, Mr. King, is there anything we need to review before turning it over to the applicant?
Uh, no, there's nothing to review. The, um, you know, attorney may want to just make a brief statement as to this this status so far. I believe it's the um, objectors case at this point.
Okay.
Is that correct counsel? Mr. Vogel?
You're muted.
Yeah, you're you're muted, you're muted, Mr. Vogel, if you could unmute.
Why, how many members of the board are present? I was unable to determine that from the roll call.
Nora, how many members do we have?
Uh, we have all but two.
So we have um.
Seven.
Seven, we have seven, and is our chairman going to come here?
Uh, he he may be late.
Okay, so he might, you may have um, uh, eight.
Just, I wanted to be clear that, from what I understand, when we commenced. The uh, application that there would be full seven members available. To vote on the matter when it does come up for a vote. And that any members who were not present at a given meeting. Um, would avail themselves of um. Of the ability to update themselves by transcript or by listening to the tapes and then certifying pursuant to the statute.
Understood. So we do have, we have, uh, we have seven now. We should have um, eight.
Fine. So um. We're 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 reconvening after, uh, just to bring us the date. After the most recent meeting, which was not so recent, which was on March twenty-three. Um, and um. At on that occasion, uh, Mr. Bryce was in the midst, I believe, of his cross-examination of Mr. McDonough, who is testified as a planning consultant with respect to the applicant's uh. Uh, position. Um. My understanding was that Mr. Bryce was going to be available to continue that questioning. Uh, at the inception of this meeting, and so. Uh, I'm prepared to uh. Have Mr. McDonough subjected to the continued cross-examination.
Thank you. Is Mr. McDonough here?
I haven't seen him.
Do you, is he here Nora?
Uh, I do not.
Is he in the waiting room maybe, or?
I will double check on that. I see Bryce in the waiting room, but.
Mr. Bryce, did the par. I. Uh, Mr. Vogel, I just don't see your um, your expert.
Well, I see him. I see him under the attendee list.
Yeah, he's there.
Is he?
Yeah, he's at the bottom, well, for me, he's at the bottom of the list.
Yeah, Sam, yeah.
So if we can bring him in?
He's in now.
Right. Uh, Mr. Mc- uh. McDon, John, if you could unmute and if you could turn on your video?
Thanks for whoever let me in.
All right, and when you're ready, I'll unmute, uh, Mr. Bryce.
And, uh, John, you understand that you're still under oath and all your licenses are in full force and effect?
Yes, I do.
All right.
I can elevate Mr. Bryce to a panelist if you like.
Well, yeah, I think we should.
You may want to, because you may want to share documents on the screen. I don't know.
Okay, he's now a panelist.
Mr. Bryce, if you could unmute and turn on your video?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, yes.
Good, thank you very much.
And we can see you, so that you, so um, uh, the planner has previously been sworn, he's been. Advised that he's still under that oath and all his licenses are still in full force and effect.
Good. Mr. McDonough, thank you for coming back today. Um. I know that when we were last speaking, we were, uh, I was questioning you about the master plan. Do you remember that?
Yes.
Okay. And that master plan was adopted in two thousand and twenty, correct?
Correct.
And if I recall correctly, I was questioning you about the goals as expressed in that master plan?
Correct.
Um. I think going through that, we've gotten through that. Let me talk to you about what the master plan says as to existing zoning, zoning. Um. Would you agree that the master plan from two thousand and twenty speaks to the existing zoning? And notes that multifamily housing is permitted in the R five zone district?
Yes.
And it notes that has a density requirement of twelve units per acre, correct?
Correct.
And it also indicates that it, a multifamily type of housing is a conditional use in the R one M zone district, correct?
Correct.
And that permits a density of ten units per acre, correct?
Correct.
And the density here is thirteen acres or thirteen units per acre, which is in excess of both of those, correct?
That is correct.
Now, do you also agree with me that the master plan existing um, zoning section? That it identifies that age-restricted housing is permitted in several zones?
Correct.
And those include the R two, the R three, the R four, and the R five, correct?
Correct.
They do not include the R one, correct?
That is correct.
Now, in the proposed future land uses section of the master plan. It states that the plan expressly discourages multifamily housing within land use categories that are focused on single-family housing, correct?
Correct.
Would you agree that the R one zone district? Is for single-family housing?
Correct.
Now, in reviewing that master plan, did you come across any recommendations? As to changing uses or density within the R one zone district?
I did not.
Did you find any recommendations as regarding this particular parcel in the master plan?
Uh, not specific with respect to the policy and the underlying surveys there was, the community surveys, there was indication of the need to provide more senior housing opportunities.
And it didn't address this particular parcel in that context, did it?
It did not.
Now, earlier in your testimony. Um, you talked about the SICA test, right? Then you indicated that it was your opinion that this falls within an inherently beneficial use, correct?
Correct.
Now, as part of the SICA test, is an applicant still required to satisfy the negative criteria?
Uh, yes, that's right, in the land use law.
A negative criteria that a board has to consider includes detrimental impacts on surrounding uses, does it not?
That is correct.
And those detriments would be things like traffic, correct?
Correct.
Okay, would be noise, correct?
Correct.
Would be odors?
Correct.
Would it be lighting glare and glow and reflection?
Yes.
In this case, there was a traffic expert that testified. Do you recall that testimony?
Uh, Mr. Verterisi, yes.
Do you recall that he said that there would be greater traffic generation impact from this use? Than from a compliance subdivision?
His testimony was that there would be greater traffic generation, not greater gener- greater traffic generation impact.
Okay. So there was greater, would you agree that traffic generation can be an impact?
It, I say, if. There's two, there's two qualities to traffic analysis. One is 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 traffic generation, but. Secondly, we look at whether there's adequate carrying capacity in the road network to accommodate that traffic.
Now, also with lighting, you would agree that lighting from a particular site can have an impact on places off-site because light travels, correct?
Correct.
And it and it reflects, correct?
Yes.
Now, as part of that negative criteria, would you agree with me that? The municipal land use law, and specifically section uh, seventy D. Uh, requires that a variance for a use variance. Not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and the zoning ordinance, correct?
Correct.
And here you have a zoning ordinance, would you agree? That provides for a single-family housing on approximately one acre lots.
That is the R one, correct?
And you would agree with me in the zone plan, at least as recently updated by the uh, two thousand and twenty master plan? That. There is no contemplation on this parcel and in the zone. Um. That high-density. Housing, even if residential. Is permitted.
Could you say that again? I lost, I lost.
Certainly. I'll I'll rephrase the question. Would you agree that the? Zone plan? As set forth in the two thousand and twenty. Master plan. Does not foresee high-density residential housing in either the R one. Zone district or on this parcel?
That that is true, as a broad policy statement, correct?
And that's what a master plan is, correct? It sets the the policy of the municipality, correct?
On a on a broad level, yes. The use variance mechanism is site-specific.
And you would agree with me that as the municipal land use law states, that the master plan is specifically there to guide. The use of lands within the municipality. In a manner that protects the public health, safety, and promotes the general welfare, correct?
Correct. Again, the uh, the master plan is a broad planning document that looks at um. Land use on a district-wide level. Uh, the use variance mechanism is there to consider site-specific. Um, qualities in much greater detail, which is what this applicant has provided.
I have no further questions. Thank you.
I have some redirective, uh, where it would permit at this point, or does the board prefer to have its questions at this point?
I would, I would see if there's any questions of the, uh, from the board, they may um. Rectify any um, cross, uh, any redirect that you'd have, and then um, after there are questions, then um, have redirect.
Any questions from the board?
Seeing none, um.
Well, I have one question, just for clarification. Uh, one, I apologize for being tardy. Does everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, John, you classified this project as inherently beneficial. Are all the components of this youth proposal inherently beneficial?
It's a great question, John, um, because we do have independent living here. Um, and I would say certainly yes, because it is all one thing, even the uh, independent. Uh, living residents are there for a reason. Um, uh, they're, uh, I'll say hooked to this because there is some sort of level of care. Uh, that they're looking for or or considering, and. I think the the case law is really clear that care, senior care facilities are inherently beneficial. I think that aspect. Um, no one is debating. Uh, the the independent living component is a subset, is a part of this this greater campus. And for that, I would point to this um, Princeton medical case where it actually found that an office was inherently beneficial. Because it was hooked to a hospital, which is inherently beneficial. So. The fact that these independent units are part and parcel of the greater thing, in my opinion, the whole thing is inherently beneficial.
Uh, John, but that that office complex was, that had doctors and health professionals in it, correct?
That I don't remember. I, I, my understanding, it was the back office function of Princeton Medical. Um, I'd have to look at the fact-specific, uh, counselor, but I I believe it was just administration. It was an an off-site office, uh, that was associated with a hospital. My only point is they're all inter, they're all interrelated here, and I think that Princeton Medical case. Gives us good guidance, at least on the on the planning level, that um, we can consider. Uh, aspects that may be not inherently beneficial by themselves as inherently beneficial when they're part of a a greater thing.
So, so John, I guess I have a question.
I'd like, I'm sorry.
All right, go ahead, go ahead, I'll go here.
No, go right in.
Okay, so my question, I guess, is if you live in the neighborhood. How much do you see of? The future possible complex if you're driving around the neighborhood? Are you going to see the lights? Is there, you know, what is the inconvenience level or the the disturbance to the resident's? Life as it is now to what it would be like if this development was approved?
Well. Any, any development of this parcel will have impact on the on the residential neighborhoods that adjoin. Uh, this particular site. This is a, this is a unique site. It's sort of a bridge uh, between the church. And between the school. We know we got the ball field right up there on on the on the hill. Um, so this neighborhood has always sort of coexisted with these institutional uses around it. I still qualify this as a. Residential use. It's the occupants' primary residence, but it is somewhat institutional in nature as well. So it's a nice blend of what's around it. But again, any development. Will have impact here, and and towards your question, will residents uh, see? Potential light sources, maybe the light sources. I'm not a hundred percent sure. I'll have to fall back on the testimony, but the the testimony. Um, is that there will be no off-site glare in accordance with the municipal requirements. Uh, there certainly could be street lighting associated with a residential development here, lighting associated with the backs of people's homes. Um, and the like. So, again, this is sort of um, its own concentrated, compact development. Which I like here because of what's around it. Um, I still say this is not in the middle of two residential neighborhoods, but it's its own. Isolated site, and those two uh, neighborhoods are are clearly independent and not reliant upon this site at all. So what will they see? Um, you're going to have a nicely lined edge here of a solid row of evergreen plantings, as you've heard on the testimony. Um, which you might not get with a single-family development here. Um, you may see massing through the trees. I'll fall back on the testimony in that regard. You may see lighting through the trees. But again, we can't cast objectionable light onto those adjoining properties.
Thank you.
One follow-up, I'd like to to, uh, uh, Mr. McCann, uh, your, your testimony is is indicating that. This variance request is site-specific for uh, changing from an R one to another use. And that the inherent benefits that are there, uh, the the applicant is proving that, and that's what the board needs to consider in looking at granting the variance. Is that correct?
That is absolutely correct. Um, a variance application is a much deeper dive. Uh, than than a master plan consideration. Granted, we may look at specific sites as we go through master plan, but clearly. When the governing body goes through their consideration of zone lines and what should go where, and the planning board as well. Uh, neither authority has the level of detail that this applicant has put forth, and the, I'll say, the proper vetting that has gone into it. Um, it, clearly, the use variance mechanism is there for a reason, and the reason is for applications such as this.
Thank you.
I just would like to go back to the inherently beneficial issue here, John. I'm gonna kind of paraphrase what you said. I've got three different uses. I've got. Care use, end-of-life stage. I've got assisted living. And I've got cottages. The end-of. Stage. Facilities. Uh. Although they, your client specifically said they are not nursing facilities because they do not. Provide that level of care, am I correct?
That's correct.
I would accept your. Classification as currently beneficial. When it gets to assisted living. It seems that the courts are saying. The fact that it's senior citizen does not mean it's. Inherently beneficial because it appears they're reinterpreting seeker when that footnote for. Senior citizen, I think it was in for assisted, assisted housing, section eight housing. Whatever it might be, not just blank senior citizen. And I say that being aware of a decision out of Monmouth County that said. These new are. Adult communities, even with a affordable component, are not inherently beneficial. And then when you get to the cottages, I I gather the way you make the cottages. Inherently beneficial is mix them all together. And most of it is inherently beneficial. Is that how it works?
Right. Again, I'm categorizing this um, particular development, this particular community as a senior living community. Uh, which deals with all all spectrums of life, and even the independent occupants are there. For a reason, otherwise they would be in uh, an active adult community. Um, there is, uh, again, in.
I guess where, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I guess where I'm going is of all of the different components. Is there the cottages and the assisted living? If you say they are not inherently beneficial, then the only true bene- inherently beneficial becomes the rooming units. So that's, that's my dilemma.
Right, and I I would just remind the board, I pointed out a couple of cases in uh, in my planning report there, including an unpublished decision. I'll. Uh, you know, the board can give it whatever deference it wants, but we dealt with this very same question, this very same issue. Uh, over in Madison, very, very similar application. Uh, where that facility was found to be inherently beneficial by that board.
So John, this is, um, I got a quick question in regards to this inherently beneficial and Mr. Chadwick's delineation of the of the categories. So did, did, did you have an opportunity to uh, listen to Mr. Stretch's testimony early on in this application consideration?
Yes.
Okay, do you remember the part where he said? That, you know, this is inherently beneficial and and definitely will will serve well. For those interested residents, uh, and I'm paraphrasing, uh, sick of taking care of their yard, um, and. Uh, those who have had their kids grown, um, and they're experiencing empty nest syndrome. Is it your professional opinion that that this category qualifies as inherently beneficial? And then I will have a follow-up question.
Well, uh, my opinion that it it is because it's all one thing. I think we can all agree that the the. The care of seniors is is laudable and of paramount public importance, and we have an applicant here. Uh, that is ready, willing, and able and committed to do that. Um, to make that real, to make that happen, um, this is a necessary component. This is a part and parcel of the. Of of the greater good that the applicant is doing. It's a, it's a piece of the overall puzzle. Um, it's been a while since I've heard Mr. Stretch's testimony, uh, but if. It's been a while since I've heard Mr. Stretch's testimony, uh but if that was the only aspect of it, that people are there because they just want out, they want to stay here. I think there's more of um in my experience with this land use, there's more of an age and place um aspect to it, where people come to these type of facilities in anticipation uh and getting comfortable with an in an environment and what's to come.
Okay. And then in regards to the different uh categories, let's say hypothetically that this applicant gets approval. Um, and they move forward in, you know, in in doing business, and let's say the care use category doesn't fare well in regards to market demand or even assisted living. And maybe this is a John Chadwick question, too. Um, does does that give this applicant the the freedom and the right to just change it up? Like, in other words, what we approve tonight, if if it all doesn't pan out from a business model perspective, do they basically, can they basically use these units any way they want, meaning making it like 100% residents who just, you know, want to quit maintaining their lawns and, you know, and their kids have have moved out?
I'll I'll give you my answer first, Ms. Snyder, and then I'll let the board turn to its own planner, but my my professional opinion is no way. It's not a carte blanche. Uh, you know, it could be 100%. Typically, what I see with this land use is is a mix, um, a range, if you will, of the different categories, and the board um can certainly, in my view, it's it's that that's part three of the of the SECA test, is the board can impose reasonable conditions that would protect against what you just said, that this all of a sudden turns into 100% um independent living facility, which is clearly not what what the applicant is is looking to do here.
Could I, before John answers, could I just piggyback on what Nancy was asking? And this was a thought in my head going, I was going to ask, I just don't know who the right person to ask is. What happens if the business fails? What happens if the whole thing just doesn't work out for whatever reason? What happens to that property? If a homeowner buys a house and it gets foreclosed on or whatever, it's sold, there's an upkeep that eventually will come back to it. But what happens if the business doesn't pan out? Is there this complex sitting in the middle of a residential neighborhood that just goes to the toilet? Who would be responsible for that?
Well, let if I can intrude and and provide answers to both Ms. Snyder and the last comment. This is an application for a use variance. Under the status of the law, if we are granted the variance, that is the use to which the property is relegated. It will be 156 units. Fifty-six for um memory care, fifty for assisted living, and fifty for independent living. That is what we have applied for, and we could not put it to any other use unless we came back to this board. To answer the question about what if it fails? If it fails, it can't be used for anything. But what we have applied for, unless we came back to this board and this board would have the sole jurisdiction in order to determine how that property would be used. And if it couldn't be used for that purpose, um then, as has occurred, not with respect to these types of units, uh because these are really needed within our communities, but with other types of uses that have gotten variances and uh they no longer were economically viable, they had to come down and they were replaced with something else. So the answer is, uh, you have an application before you which is finite. We're not applying for anything other than what you see, and we have no right to use the property for other than what we have applied for and what you eventually approve if you approve it. But that.
So I I want I want to step in here. I'm sorry, Scott.
That's okay.
So I understand what you're saying, Mr. Vogel. However, whatever the intent is and the business model and plan is, in reality, let's say it, let's say the memory care is not, you're you're not filling up the memory care units. So what are you doing? Are these memory care units going to be sitting vacant as the applicant reapproaches the board and then turns around and and wants to either repurpose it or comes up with a different plan and waits for the the board to you give a thumbs up or a thumbs down? What, you know, what happens there? I I we want to make sure whatever we're, you know, you I understand what your intent is, but you can't predict what reality in the market's going to do.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, but the approval.
Okay, I listen, the the question you're asking is not an unfair question, and it is not an unusual question when an application for a variance is made, and the answer is a rather direct one. And that is, uh, whenever uh you look at the application, you have to look at the basis upon which it is predicated. Um, every case that we could cite indicates the need for this type of uh housing, for uh memory care with uh for assisted living and for independent living for people who are not at advanced age. Uh, if you look at not only the court decisions, but all of the uh socio-economic studies that have been done throughout the country, there's a reason for making this application, and the reason is that there's a need for it. Now, your your comment may be, well, still, what happens if it fails? Well, somebody's making a rather substantial investment in building this because it doesn't expect it to fail. If it does fail, it comes back before this board because the property can only be used for specifically what we say. So let's take your example. Um, fifty-six uh units for uh memory care, and they only fill it up to forty. And so there are sixteen units vacant. They can't use those sixteen vacant units for anything but memory care unless they come back to the board and they give you some testimony and you make a decision. That's the reality.
So so I appreciate that answer from Ms. Snyder. But so what you're saying is the business fails, God forbid, that property will sit idle, vacant, until somebody buys it and decides to do something else with it?
I don't say properties don't sit idle and and people don't make investments like this without keep doing what needs to be done to keep it vital. I'll uh just look around. Uh, loo- look around Parsippany, look around uh uh all of Morris County. Uh, look around all the state of New Jersey. These type of units are not failing, they're filling up. There's a need for them, and that's what our testimony has been.
And and I appreciate that's today, but maybe five years or 10 years down the road. My concern is that you have a business in the middle of a residential area, and there is no real wind down where that area might become dilapidated, and there's no fix for the people who live in the area. I appreciate that your client has is going to invest a lot of money and did a lot of um investigation on investing wisely, but that's no guarantee. You have a ton of office space, people who built buildings thinking they were going to be full, and now they're not.
You're making a business judgment. I'm before this board for a zoning issue.
Okay.
And you're what what you're talking about is that something may occur in the business world that makes this less viable in the future, uh that has no real factual basis as to where we are in our society today.
There are no guarantees.
But my my questions actually pertain to the zoning, the zoning plan. And again, I I want to make sure that whatever we're considering tonight doesn't end up being repurposed to the point where we're going to have a bunch of people who just get sick and tired of maintaining a house, and we're putting and and we're labeling it, much to Mr. Chadwick's point, um inherently beneficial. And I don't know, you know, I would think memory care and maybe uh a portion of assisted living may be inherently beneficial. But I'm not sure about the cottages. I mean, you know, if I if I decide to just not maintain my lawn and 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 take up a unit, I don't know. I is that really inherently beneficial?
Yes.
I wrote a memo.
When I feel like I don't want to maintain my lawn.
I wrote a memo and gave it to the board. Uh, there are any number of cases that talk about um uses such as this which have independent living as a component of the facility, and they are all uh found to be inherently beneficial, not only by other by other boards, but by the courts. And I I I supplied that memorandum to the board at the beginning. The chairman indicated at that time that the uh Mr. King would be advising the board as to the law, and that I could I would re-raise that issue at the conclusion of the application. And I I will, when I have that opportunity after uh the uh uh application is complete, uh to make that argument again. But let me say this, Ms. Snyder, I I want to be as unequivocal as possible. I thought I had been. This is an application for 156 units. And those fifty-six units are comprised of fifty ILs, fifty independent living, fifty assisted living, and fifty-six memory care. That is our application. We are making no other application. We are seeking no other approval. If you see fit to grant it, that is all we can build, and that's all it can be occupied for and for nothing else.
Understood, but in our in our exchange just now, though, it seems like there is the potential, and again, we don't know what the future will bring, but there is the potential of of this outline and the categorization and the ratio of units um for for this potential uh site to be transformed into apartments based on our our back and forth in regards to what is quote-unquote inherently beneficial. And and, you know, I I know I kind of oversimplified it with me using myself as an example. If I want to stop, you know, maintaining my lawn and my kids move out of my house, and so that's, you know, that is it, that is a zoning question, and it's a fair one. So I I got you. I got you, Mr. Vogel. I I understand what the uh the application is. But I mean, there is a, you know, a level of concern that the, you know, the the purpose of this, the property may or rather, the business or the units may be repurposed at some point in time in the future.
Ms. Snyder, if it if it helps just to tack on a couple of things, I think before we're done, we can certainly have a dialogue about appropriate uh ranges here. Um, but clearly there are distinctions between what will happen in this facility from an independent living standpoint and what would happen in an active adult 55-plus community, which has no services. Uh, this is going to have services for those residents. Um, uh, the the typical resident is probably in the range of, as I see the statistics, between 55 and 75 years old. That's in a uh active adult 55-plus. The average age of an independent resident in the this particular applicant's community is approximately 80 years old. Uh, offered meals, housekeeping, social programs, and transportation. So while these residents are considered independent, uh there's still a need-based component to their decision-making process, which is why they come here. It is a distinction. And uh towards Scott's question about the white elephant, it's a very stable land use, and it's almost a sad commentary on on where we are now demographically, and that people are are aging, and we only see the statistics going up, unfortunately, in terms of memory care, dementia, Alzheimer's, and the like. So unfortunately, this is a very strong land use, and and we need to plan for it. We need to pick our spots. And um I know it's a use variance, but we have a lot of testimony here as as to the fact.
John Chadwick, um based on the back and forth, do you have anything to add to this and in regards to Mr. Joskowitz and my my concerns? And even some of your points that you made earlier?
The issue of the use there, it's evolving into something else. I agree with John. It's what they have in front of you is it. They have to live with it. And if it to be changed, they got to come back to the same board, start all over again, show some reason. The bigger issue on that is white elephant issue. Probably fifteen, twenty years ago, the New Jersey started licensing uh assisted living facilities. And the license really was nothing more than the person who was going to operate it was trained in that uh population group. And they issued one year nineteen thousand five hundred permits. The market was glutted. And it went through a shakeout period for ten years. And now the assisted living industry is uh stable. This is a hybrid of that. You can't predict it. And it isn't the town that's risking its money, but you could you have a white elephant there? Oh, you could. Is it likely? Probably not.
Am I allowed to base my decision on that outcome?
There's no others that is no, none of us sitting here tonight
Yeah.
are real estate experts in terms of design, build, and and manage. That isn't what we do. The applicant says he is. And he's building them elsewhere. That was his testimony. Could he get caught in an in an overbuild and or an economic problem? Was he good? Uh, is he a rookie at this? No. So you're gonna have to take away all of that stuff. I my real issue is the painting this as a full inherently beneficial use, I disagree with Mr. McDonough. It our components of it inherently fit beneficial, yes, they are. Does that carry the day? We'll decide that as a board. But the proofs are vastly different from, quote, an inherently beneficial use and a Medici case. We agree both. Medici, you have to show that you are not uh in violation of the master plan and that somehow or other, both that issue. Now, we had cross-examination on that subject already. So you heard what the responses.
And I would, again, John McDonough, I would just say, um if the board were to uh disagree with my opinion that the entire thing is inherently beneficial and the more stringent Medici test applied, that test is meant to, uh, the difference would be the site suitability aspect. And uh this site is particularly suitable uh by virtue of its context, what's what's around it, in consideration of the school and the church, and I believe adequate separation from those residential neighborhoods. Um, and also by virtue of its condition. This is this is a large site. It has excellent carrying capacity. I don't think we can be lured into uh thinking that it's going to remain undeveloped uh forever. It is an unconstrained piece of land. Uh, development of this parcel, trees coming down, um is inevitable here, particularly with the scarcity of land that we're we're dealing with in New Jersey. Um, and again, picking our spots here. So I think this use is uh particularly suitable. It is central to the population that it will will serve. And um as I say, it's a land use that's not going away. It's a very stable land use for unfortunate reasons.
John, is the has the water issue been resolved?
Is that for John McDonough? I don't know.
Mr. Vogel, has that issue been resolved?
The water issue? No, we've addressed the water issue very early on and said that that is not a zoning issue. Uh, we expect that uh uh if the variance is granted for the use, we will come before the uh this board with respect to site plan. And that site plan, we will have to show that the water is available.
Okay.
We haven't pursued the water in uh any further at this point because it is not an issue with respect to whether or not uh the use variance should be granted.
Gotcha. Can you break ground without water rights? Can you break ground without water rights?
Pardon me, could, could we get building permit without adequate water? Of course not.
Okay.
I, you know, since, I don't want to, I don't want to burden the board at this point with the, with the legal memorandum that I, that I submitted. And it's not the, the first, not probably the appropriate time. But let me give you just one brief little comment that the court said. In, in looking at an inherently beneficial use that had independent living with it, it provides for the residential, social and healthcare needs of New Jersey senior citizens. Facilities such as the one proposed provides a rare opportunity for seniors to continue to live privately as independently as they are able and in dignity, while at the same time, the essential nutritional, physical and social needs they cannot meet for themselves are being met for them. That's the court talking precisely about what we have proposed in this application. And I dare say, not one court has ever taken a facility such as this and not found it to be inherently beneficial. Unless there are other questions of Mr. McDonough, his testimony is completed, I suspect. I had indicated before, I had some more questions, but this back and forth that we've had, I think, has covered the area.
Yeah, I, I have one question. This is Casey. John McDonough, you labeled this facility as a senior living facility, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Last, in the last meeting, you say that state of New Jersey, there is no age restriction. Anybody can come and stay. Is that correct? Any age group?
I don't remember saying that. I don't, is there an age restriction that may be part of the licensing requirement? I'm not, I can't, I honestly can't remember.
I have a note here that says in the last meeting, maybe it's not you who said that, but there, there was a mention of no, not having any age restriction for this kind of facility.
I'm sorry, I, I don't remember saying that.
Do you know if there is an age restriction?
I'd, I'd have to go back and check the record to see if there was something to the, to the contrary. Yeah. My understanding is it caters towards senior population.
My notes indicate back in last summer, they agreed to no 18, no person under 18 would live in the independent units. And basically gave a outline of the age group that they expected to occupy all others. So they're, they're going to register the senior, the cottages as senior units. They can pick basically a number of different age groups, but I think we've all been talking about 65 and over. To prove it, I think you want to put some kind of.
Right, there are all types of typical restrictions on age restricted housing that are standard conditions that I'm sure the board can impose.
Right.
Does, does this facility go, is this facility going to have any kind of restrictions since it's a senior living facility?
Yes, I said they would. I said we wouldn't have anybody under 18 or 18 or under. And we can, we can put that as a stipulation, Casey, so.
That's 18, okay.
That was my understanding. That's all they committed to so far.
Is there any recross, Mr. Bryce?
I have no recross at this time.
Mr. Vogel, are you, you're done with your case or do you have any other witnesses?
Yes, that, that, thank you for the opportunity. That wraps up our testimony on our case in principle. And I suspect that Mr. Bryce will have his position to be presented to the board.
And John, you, John was presented to any other people not represented by Mr. Bryce? Is that correct? Mr. Chair?
Yeah, I was going to ask you that question. Would the public have an opportunity to question?
Questions of John. So do you want to just open it up to people who are not being represented by Mr. Bryce with any questions of Mr. McDonough?
Yep, so at, at this point, we'll open it up to members of the public who are not being represented. We do have a list of those present that we'll cross-reference before calling. And please make sure you select the raise your hand button and then Nora will call on you in order that she sees them.
This is specific only for questions of Mr. McDonough.
Correct. And as a reminder, it has to be a question, not your opinion or a statement. Please make sure you are asking a question.
His testimony.
Whenever you're ready.
Okay, we can unmute Nick Homjak. Nick, can you hear? You need to unmute Nick Homjak. Okay, Nick, don't mute yourself. Can you hear us?
Yes, I, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, getting back to Mr. McDonald's, McDonough's statement about the traffic. And I have a note here from 3/20, 3/23/22. And he made this statement that the traffic will actually improve. Now, when the attorney for the neighborhood.
Mr. Chairman, this is an opportunity for question, as I understand it, not a statement.
The question is, the question is, how can you, A, take auto emissions and air quality out of the traffic equation? And what did Mr. McDonald mean when he said that the condition of traffic would actually improve? I believe it was through some accommodation. But does he not know that automobiles cause air quality issues with their emissions?
Is that, is that, can you answer that?
Okay, Mr. McDonough, are you ready to answer those questions?
Sure, sure thing. I'll, I'll, I'll be brief. Hi, Nick, I don't see you. But either way, in response to the, the two questions, the first, I'm just a planner, I'm not the traffic expert. So my planning conclusions are reliant upon the testimony on the record of Mr. Vertarisi, who, who made those conclusions during his testimony. I believe it was in December of 2021 with respect to traffic generation and how this will not degrade levels of service in the area on the adjoining roadways and intersections. And that will not exceed the carrying capacity of the, of the, of the road network. I think we all know what goes on at Littleton Road when those schools are letting out during events and the like, for sure. I've tried to take that left turn out of Rita Drive many times in my life, leaving school. That said, with respect to the air emissions, I am not aware of any study in this particular area that would link auto emissions of, of any level to unhealthy or unsafe conditions, given the ambient air quality in, in the area, which is good. This will have a minimal impact on that. I'm not aware of any evidence. I have not heard any evidence to the contrary.
What if you were provided evidence? Would you accept it? Would the board accept it?
I, I always reserve the right.
At, at this time, Nick, if you have any evidence at the end of, at the end, you can provide testimony for or against the project. And at that time, you can present any evidence.
Okay, I will. And is this, is this developer aware of the present crisis that exists in senior for care homes within neglect? The employees who suffer substandard pay and benefits? And if this is a hybrid, is he aware that hybrids usually are the first to fail? And in this case, it would be because a certain class of seniors would expire along with their income and this, and especially in the, what's happening in our economy? These senior citizens.
I didn't testify to that effect, so not proper for him to answer.
Okay, so the, the benefit here then would be for seniors with a certain income, true?
No, it is a, a, a planning objective to accommodate, to provide for housing and other land uses according to the needs of all New Jersey citizens.
So it would, this unit would include affordable housing, a minimum affordable housing?
I, I didn't say that. I, I said that this will be open to anyone.
So it's not affordable housing in any aspect or form?
Let me interject. I asked that question back in December and they are under the 20% requirement of the township.
All right. And could that 20% requirement in this out-of-zone area be considered a form of spot zoning? A way to get their.
There's no, there's no relationship, Nick. The 20% requirement applies to any project of five or more units.
In the proper zone, appropriate zone?
No, it applies to any project. I didn't talk about zoning.
Okay.
It's to any project.
All right. And one more question, this would be to Mr. Vogel. And he made a statement on May 19th that the, the Department of NJDP would be obligated to find the water. And then he also made a statement that Precipony had acquired new wells. And the question is, it seems to me, he was under the intention, these wells were acquired because we had enough water or more, we were getting more water, but we're getting more water because we didn't have enough water. The four wells all had problems. So his statement about nonchalantly, they're going to have to accommodate them with water. I, I don't know where he got that from.
His question.
Yeah, where's the question?
The question is, where did he get the idea that Precipony was creating more wells to accommodate more development?
I, the attorney doesn't have to answer unless he wants to. It would be a question for Mr. McDonough? If he can answer?
I, I don't know. This is John McDonough. I don't know the answer.
Okay. And, and, and the last question will be, are we going to hear the environmental impact statement from the engineer who created it concerning the property?
I think the engineer has already testified.
Can you give me the date?
I don't have it in front of me.
The name of the?
This site engineer has already testified.
And what was his name?
I believe that was on or about October 13th, Nick.
Was his name Kook?
You know, the, the, the spirit of that question is inappropriate, Nick, really. Can, can we, can we, can we rein this in to be more professional?
I wanted to know the name of the man who made the environmental impact statement. I'll leave you in peace.
Am I going to answer this or?
We can get that to him.
Okay.
Nick, you said that was your last question, correct?
Isn't it Michael Texturus?
We'll officially show him and move on.
Mr. Chairman, would you, would you please?
We're done with him.
Chairman, Mr. Chairman, would, would we please have the questioner restrict his questions to Mr. McDonough as a, as a function of exploring what his direct testimony was and not have an open mic for questions that were not pertinent to Mr. McDonough's testimony?
He's finished speaking. I'm sure everyone else listening heard, heard your request.
I understood, Mr. Vogel. We, I was helping you out, Mr. Vogel.
No, no, I understand that. I don't have a problem with that. I'm just asking you as a point at which you come to.
I appreciate the open mic comment, all right? I was, I, I actually took the mic in assistance toward, to you.
I'm not sure the, the name was an actual insult, but regardless, we're finished. Next, next person, Nora.
Just for the record, the chairman, Robert Ira Kane, Ira Kane, came on probably about five, 10 minutes ago.
I have been on since 8:33 for the record.
Nora, who's next?
Okay, I see no other hands raised.
Hey, Mr. Chair, you going to take over?
No, I'm, I'm in, I'm in the car on my iPad. It's a little inconvenient.
All right, we'll keep going then. Mr. King, what would be?
At this time, the applicant has rested his case. Correct, Mr. Vogel?
The objector goes now?
Now, now we open it to anyone having testimony for or against the project. And as we have done before, we would defer to Mr. Bryce and his group. After he is done, then we would defer to any individuals who had any information or testimony for or against the project.
Okay. Mr. Bryce, you ready?
I certainly am, thank you.
Floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Kaplan. Mr. Kaplan, and for the benefit of the board, thank you. My name is Jim Bryce. I do represent the objectors in this matter. I only have one witness present, that is Peter Steck. I believe that he is in the waiting room. And I would request that he be admitted so that he can be sworn qualified and provide testimony.
Okay. Mr. King, you want to swear, swear in?
Is he in?
I saw him in the waiting room.
I don't see him in.
I'm having a problem elevating him to panelist. He's probably going to have to leave the meeting and come back in again.
All right, he's back in now.
Yeah, muted.
Oh, he's still on the attendee list.
He's also not all the way in. I'm not sure how he's connecting, but he may be on a phone. So he's not, I can't make him a panelist. It won't, he won't elevate. I can, I can unmute him. So he's not, I can't make him a panelist. It won't, he won't elevate. I can, I can unmute him.
Let's do that for start.
Peter, you're unmuted.
Uh, can I be heard now?
Yes. This, this is the attorney. Could you raise your right hand?
Okay, my right hand is raised.
Do you swear from testimony about before the board choose to help you God?
I do.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name?
Yes, it's Peter G. Steck, S.T.E.C.K. Eighty Maplewood Avenue, Maplewood, New Jersey.
Okay, and you're you're gonna be providing uh planning testimony?
That is correct.
And all your licenses are in full force and effect?
They are.
You've been qualified before either this board or other boards in the state of New Jersey, correct?
That's correct.
Right, uh, Mister Chairman, the witness has been uh sworn and qualified as an expert uh in planning. Mister Bryce, if you want to take any other um credential information from your client, I don't know that you need to.
No, Mister King, I think that that's adequate if the board's accepting his credentials.
Thank you.
Mister Steck, thank you for appearing tonight. And just for the benefit of the record, can you tell us what your role has been in this matter?
Uh, my role has been as a uh licensed planner in the state of New Jersey uh to review uh the uh application as it's being presented, this bifurcated application, and to determine whether or not the applicant has met uh the statutory burdens of proof that are needed that would allow the board to uh consider the application and potentially approve it.
Okay, now, in doing that, have you had the benefit of reviewing all of the records that have been filed? And all of the application materials?
Yes, I reviewed the application materials. Uh, the uh Mister McDonough did a uh a report early on in two thousand and nineteen. I've reviewed the uh memos of the engineer as well as Mister Chadwick, uh reviewed the zoning ordinance and master plan. Um, I did, I was uh present during the uh March twenty third meeting virtually uh where I did hear the testimony of Mister McDonough uh and his cross examination. Um, and I did uh tour the subject property and the surrounding neighborhood uh to prepare for my testimony this evening.
Okay, very good. And what is your understanding of the application and what it seeks?
Um, the applicant, again, this is a bifurcated application, so the focus is on the use rather than a site plan, but the applicant is proposing uh a future subdivision of the property so that the church on about ten acres would remain in the front. And the back uh twelve point three four acres uh would be uh developed. Um, the applicant has categorized the development as a senior living facility. Um, I think that glosses over some details as as already uh repeated this evening. Um, there are three components to this. There's a memory care component, uh an assisted component, but there's also uh an independent component uh that's referred to as the cottages. And uh apparently, um, there is no age restriction that is being proposed by the applicant. Uh, if I recall, the terminology used uh by Mister McDonough is that they're they're gonna target uh these units for a certain population. But so far on the record, uh at least what appeared this evening is that uh they're not gonna allow uh anyone under eighteen eighteen or under to uh live in the area, uh but there is no uh age restriction that is being uh established. The the other issue that characterizes the project is that this is not a what they call a C C R C, Continuing Care Retirement Community. Uh, that that's a uh a separate entity where there is a relationship between the different components. Um, and and in a sense, if you're in independent living, you're guaranteed uh can a continuing continuation of care. Um, I'm not sure that that has been uh 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 part of the guarantee of being in the independent living units here. The the other uh issue that I think is on the plate while uh Mister Chadwick did indicate that the twenty percent uh affordable component uh is a requirement, uh I'm not sure that the, and and I'll as a footnote, I understand that the assisted living uh may have ten percent of its beds by state regulations as affordable. But I'm, I don't recall the applicant consenting to as part of the application to comply with the twenty percent Mount Laurel component. So, uh I guess to a further level of clarification, while the applicant says that this is a composite uh senior living facility, it is not a continuing care retirement community. Um, because the municipal land use law defines a citizen, senior citizen as sixty two and over. Um, some or potentially all of the residents of the independent living units uh would not be senior citizens under the law. So I I think that there are uh many loose ends, and in my opinion uh the fact that there is no uh age standard for occupancy, particularly of the um independent living units, uh in my opinion, this cannot reasonably be categorized as a senior living facility. That's kind of a marketing tool, uh but it's not what in fact this is, in my opinion.
Now when you're looking at this particular land use and this proposal, do you look to the zoning ordinance and the master plan in formulating an opinion even outside of whether or not this is an inherently beneficial use as to whether or not this is an appropriate development?
Um, yes, uh, I have to do that, and I think the board has to do that because um assuming for the moment that uh the assisted living component is an inherently beneficial use and governed on this, under the SECA decision, you still have to address the negative criteria, which involves an evaluation of both the uh zoning ordinance and the master plan. Uh if the uh independent living is as they describe it, which means it's not age restricted, except there are no school age kids. Um, that is under a different category. That would, in my opinion, be a a under the Medici decision, which has a higher burden of proof uh in terms of what is the public purpose that's advanced? Um, uh why is the site, the use particularly suited? And and there has to be an enhanced quality of proof of meeting uh the negative criteria, both in terms of the public good and the master plan. Uh, to kind of ru- run through those facts. So so what I want to suggest is, not suggest, is my conclusion uh initially, that certainly a component of this project, the independent living units uh do not share a status as being inherently beneficial. Uh, they happen to be on the same property uh as the assisted living is. But there isn't the connection uh that would occur if this were a continuing care retirement community. And again, uh even if everybody in the independent living was, let's say, fifty five uh years old, that's not a senior citizen in terms of the municipal land use law. Uh, there is no purpose statement in the municipal land use law that says that uh we should promote housing uh for fifty five and over, so there are no school age kids. While some people might think that's a good thing, there is no recognized public purpose uh of having a development uh that is simply age restricted. Uh, that's an option of a developer, but it's not a public purpose. Uh, just to start a little bit back further, um, this property, as you know, um, is about twenty two acres and uh the church and facilities are in the front half. Uh, and the back half is largely uh wooded and and undeveloped. Um it is, um the property does abut, I think, a total of eighteen single family homes. So this is not a uh an isolated property. This is a property again, that at the current time, um, abuts only single family development, and indeed, it's, I think it's eighteen homes it does. In the rear, as you know, is the the school. Uh, that's isolated from the property. There's no direct connection. There's a difference in grade. Um, there is heavy buffering, so um these properties are not, the subject property is not connected to the school. Uh, part of my analysis was certainly looking at the surrounding area. And uh the area is predominantly single family. Um, across uh Littleton Road, our single family homes predominantly, although there are a few uh uh minor non-residential uses. Um, on both sides of this property, um, there's single fa- established single family development, uh few, if any vacant lots. Uh, to the rear, again, with at a different elevation, um, but with no access through the subject property, no either pedestrian or vehicular access um uh is is the high school. Um this property as described is uh split zoned. Um, the front portion is in the R three zone that requires uh fifteen thousand square feet. Uh, the development that's being proposed is in the back portion, which is the R three zone. And as the board is aware, uh, that requires a minimum lot size of forty thousand square feet. Um, estimating what it could be developed as under the current zoning, uh, the rear again is twelve point three four acres if subdivided as the applicant is suggesting in the concept plan. Uh, if I deduct fifteen percent for roads, uh, that means that the rear portion of this property could be developed for eleven single family homes according to the current zoning uh of the property. Uh, the front portion uh is, as you know, in a church use, it's a conditional use. Uh, and that would be, you know, truncated. But the the focus obviously on this application is what is gonna happen in the rear, in the rear of the property. A s- another issue I want to raise is that clearly uh the governing body knew what assisted living is. This is, there are some instances where a new use may might appear uh that no one has experience with in the planning and zoning world. Uh, that's not the case here. Uh, this ordinance defines what an assisted living uh use is. Um, there are uh at least two zones that permit assisted living. So the the governing body uh clearly knew what assisted living was. Uh, they've addressed it uh in the ordinance, uh and this uh site and the zone that it's in um are not uh not planned and not zoned uh for assisted living. Um, as Mister Bryce asked me, you know, part of the consideration was was the master plan. Uh, when Mister McDonough uh first did his report, which was dated October eleventh, two thousand and nineteen, uh, he just analyzed the reexamination report, I believe, of two thousand and fourteen. Uh, since that time, uh and Mister McDonough acknowledges it, uh that there's been a a new master plan um that's dated January sixth, uh two thousand and twenty. So it's uh from a planning point of view, relatively hot off the press. Uh, uh, Mister McDonough cited some portions of the plan. I I want to go into it in a little more detail. Uh, again, because I think it's clearly a major issue in terms of addressing the negative criteria that apply to this application, um whether or not one component is an inherently beneficial use or not. Um, there are um several goals of the master plan that, in my opinion, are important. The very first goal on page twelve uh talks about preserving and protecting the character, density, and aesthetics of the township's established and stable residential neighborhoods uh by restricting incompatible land uses from these areas and significant increases in intensity of use. Uh, and one of the things in the paragraph below that, that it warns, is that it it's not incur, it wants to discourage inappropriately scaled residential development within those neighborhoods. So that even though uh someone could say, although this the the cottages are, you know, residential units, um, the assisted living or memory care is more of an institutional category, but it is residential to a certain degree. But the scale of the development was clearly a concern and uh of the of the master plan is expressed by the adopted document. Uh, Mister McDonough, in his testimony, talked about providing a variety of housing. Uh, and that indeed was one goal number two of the master plan, also on page twelve. But there was a cautionary note when it talked about higher density development such as apartment units. Uh, that goal said that those apartment units should be directed toward established centers of development in close proximity to transit and business corridors and should be planned to mitigate potential impacts, including on established, single-family neighborhoods, traffic, infrastructure, environmental resources, light, air, open space, and the integrity of the township's uh land use plan. Um, the also their goal number seven talked about uh environmental consider considerations, and one of those was to uh pay attention to wooded areas, and that is clearly the back end of this site. Um, Mister McDonough spent some time talking about uh the the population breakdown, the so-called cohorts. And um saying that the fifty-plus cohort was increasing. Uh, and that's in the two thousand and twenty master plan, so it's not new information that uh the cohort of people aged fifty and over um is increasing. Uh, but the governing bo- the planning board knew that. It's in the master plan and and indeed, the master plan does talk about areas uh that can be suitable for um, let's say, assisted living. But even with the knowledge that there is an increase in that age group, uh, the uh planning board did not recommend uh that that type of use be in the R one zone or the areas recommended for R one zoning. And I I'll just repeat again that the, just because someone is fifty years old does not make them a a special population category. The municipal land use law uh promotes senior housing, but that's for housing for people that are sixty two and over. It's not for people that are nineteen uh years and older. Um, the master plan also had an analysis of neighborhoods. And uh this subject property is is uh squarely between, uh, I guess to the north would be Park Estates and Deerfield Estates. But the existing land use map uh it it certainly acknowledges this as a religious property, the entire property and the school to the rear, but otherwise, uh, it recognizes that this is solidly a single family area. Um, figure eleven of the uh current master plan uh has a characterization of population densities. And this area is colored in a um, I guess, a yellowish color, which has a density of uh up to five people per acre. So that coincides with a relatively low um, single-family density uh use. Uh, the master plan also talks about the zoning districts. Um, and on uh And on page forty-two. It talks about the density range. And again, the density range of the R one district, it said, in this this low-density category. Was anywhere. From one point five units per acre to a half a unit acre or up to two acres. For a single-family development. So the master plan recognized the current zoning. It also had an a analysis of traffic. And Littleton Road was color-coded with a color that said frequent traffic congestion. So there was a planning board recognition. That although it has a collector type of arterial function to it. The master plan recognized that it currently, at least in two thousand and twenty, was experiencing a frequent traffic congestion, and I'm sure as the board is familiar. It's not too far from the traffic light and and even my examination of their, you know, at rush hour or school hour, the the driveways can be blocked by cars backing up on Littleton. So the heart of the master plan, while Mr. McDonough says, oh, it's a general document. And it 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 has a specific map. There's a color-coded map that shows the subject property in a public slash non-public designation, which is a blue color. To the north is a low-density residential characterization or recommendation. And immediately to the south is a moderate-density classification. Those two classifications to the north and south are for single-family homes. The one to the north, low-density in terms of the master plan means one point five dwelling units per acre, up to a half a dwelling unit per acre. Moderate density, which is the neighborhood to the south. Has a two to three dwelling units an acre. I note parenthetically that the density described by the applicant, I think, is twelve point six units per acre. Of significance is that the master plan discussed on page one twenty-seven. The not, the public and non-public category, and I'll read that paragraph into the record. The public slash non-public profit category shown in blue identifies existing municipal, educational or nonprofit uses. In the event that such uses change in the future, for example, a church or a school closes. The use should revert to that of the general surrounding area. In most cases, this would be residential at a density as indicated on the land use plan. So there's a, even though the master plan is very site-specific. It says that this property is recommended for a nonprofit use. It recognizes that if there is a change in terms of the master plan, you look at the abutting areas in terms of of that kind of density. As you know, it's the burden of proof of the applicant. To prove that the statutory proofs are there that would allow the board to approve this application. And again, we're a little bit handicapped because this is a bifurcated application. So we don't have the details. When when the applicant says, oh, we can do buffering. You know, we can protect lighting. While that's carried to the future, I think it's reasonable to look at the density, the intensity that's proposed and how reasonable i- is it? And again, this property, the entire property, buts eighteen single-family homes. In my opinion, just looking at the concept plan, it's going to be hard to buffer this development, which has, you know, external perimeter areas of parking and traffic. It has long rows of buildings, something very much uncharacteristic of the eleven single-family homes that could have been developed under the property. I think a a fundamental problem, and the board has already, I think, explored this. Mr. McDonough says, oh, the whole thing is an inherently beneficial use. This is not a continuing care retirement community. It is a, the independent living units are not senior units. They're at a minimum, they're fifty-five and over, and and the record may show that as as long as you're over eighteen. So I suppose if that's the case, then you could have college students forming a household and living back there, not what the applicant is marketing toward. But the answer is, there is no restriction on that. And and it's my opinion, because this is not a continuing care retirement community, there's not a guarantee of care. When you start out in the independent living. That while the CICA test may apply to, let's say, the memory care or assisted living. It does not apply and shouldn't apply to the independent living units. And this evening, Mr. McDonough kind of backtracked, and he said, well, if if you know, Medici applies, then we meet the proofs. I would disagree with that, because this site is not, in my opinion, particularly suited. Again, we abut many single-family homes. The master plan recognizes that traffic is an issue, especially on Littleton Road. The intensity of the project, as evidenced by the concept plan, suggests that it's going to be very difficult to buffer the surrounding homes from the typical land use impacts in terms of noise, light, and and other activity. This is clearly a a different character than what was anticipated. If this property were developed for eleven single-family homes, most likely backyards of the existing homes would abut the backyards of other homes. You don't need buffering when you have similar uses, one to the other. So back to kind of a summary. In my opinion, the the applicant has the burden of proof, and I think, in my opinion, the applicant has, first of all, mischaracterized how this property should be, how this project should be analyzed. The applicant has taken the primary position that the entire project is an inherently beneficial use. This is, even if this was a continuing care retirement community, which it's not. To say that that I'm going to allow non-senior citizens, people under sixty-two, to live here. Takes it out of that category. There is no public purpose served in the municipal land use law when you have people under sixty-two that are are being promoted through a certain type of housing. That is not inherently beneficial. I think the linkage is only that it's on the same property. There's no guarantee of care that I recall from the testimony that make this one land use unit. And again, as Mr. McDonough testified this evening, he only recalls that, you know, no one under eighteen years of age. That does not make this a senior living community. That makes this a multifamily development. Which is not permitted in the zone. So my conclusion is that the applicant has mischaracterized the proofs that are needed to analyze this project. In my opinion, focusing on the independent units, they're not inherently beneficial. They're subject to the Medici case. The master plan clearly had many principles that wanted to make the development and, in fact, the conversion of church properties into uses that were similar to the adjacent residential areas. In this case, the the single-family detached home areas. So in my opinion, there is substantial impairment of both the zone plan and zoning ordinance. I'll go back to the beginning. The governing body knew what assisted living was. There are zones that it permits assisted living. This is clearly not one of them. We have a master plan that's relatively hot off the press, two thousand and twenty. The populate, the the planners, the the planning board knew the different age groups in town. They were analyzed in that report. And even with that knowledge, this property was not recommended for multifamily use or for assisted living. This is part of a larger neighborhood. This property, while it fronts and has access just on Littleton Road, it abuts many single-family homes. So clearly, in my opinion, it's integrated into the larger area. And even though Littleton Road is a busy road, there are single-family homes a- across the street. So I think there is a miss, an improper analysis, characterization of the project. I think this is substantially at odds with what the land use plan is looking for, which is not general terminology, as Mr. McDonough. There's a map here that talks about every piece of property in town with a color code. And it's had specific comments about this property. So I I know that there's a tendency to kind of gloss over the details, but they're important in this instance. I think that because of the excessive density compared to what was it was zoned for by the governing body and what it was recommended for in the master plan. And the inherent difficulties of buffering surrounding properties because of that higher density proposed. In my opinion, the applicant has not met its burden of proof. And that if the board approved this, even subject to a later site plan approval. In my opinion, it will result in substantial detriment to the public good and substantial impairment of the zone plan and zoning ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Steck. And just to be clear, would you agree with me that this proposal would actually run completely in opposite of goal one of the master plan?
That's correct. That's the goal, that wanted to preserve the character, density and aesthetics of the established and stable residential neighborhoods. This is directly opposed to that goal.
And would it also run diametrically opposed to goal number two?
Yes, it would. Again, the 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 higher-density housing was intended to be close to other, let's say, supporting amenities such as transit corridors or business corridors. This is isolated. And in my opinion, this is not, this is essentially, and one way to look at this is this. It's essentially a multifamily project, certainly not single-family detached homes in the classic sense, and the master plan looked for this in other locations.
And would you agree that the master plan expressly discouraged this type of development, multifamily housing within land use categories focused on single-family housing?
Yes, it recognized that there was an element of friction, that it's inappropriate. And in my opinion, there, that is one of the elements of substantial impairment that I conclude.
And and towards that very same end, sir, would you agree that the not only the master plan from two thousand and twenty, but the current zoning ordinance does provide accommodations for certain areas of the township and certain zones that would accommodate these uses?
That's correct. There are at least two zones where it is a classified as a an acceptable use. This is not, and and those zones are, I would say, in general, more intensive zones. Because the other uses that are permitted in them, they are at the other end of the scale than the single-family zones.
Mr. Steck, I have no further questions. If there's anything that you'd like to add, please feel free to do so. And if not, I would leave the witness available for examination.
I have nothing else to add, other than I I look great, although you can't see my picture.
Fair enough.
Cross-examination.
Sorry, Mr. King, what were you saying?
No, it's just, Mr. Vogel can cross-examine, you know, the witness if you so chooses.
Thank you. Good evening, Peter. How are you?
I'm okay, thank you.
Been a while. So tell me. You indicated that you looked, reviewed the application. You walked the property and you watched Mr. McDonough's testimony on March twenty-three. Did you hear any of the other testimony?
I was not present during the early testimony, but the information was relayed to me by either my clients or or my attorney.
So so it's clear that you did not hear any of the testimony with respect to the proposed use. You only heard with your own ears what Mr. McDonough testified to.
That's correct.
And so whatever information you have with respect to the operation came from your clients who admittedly hired you to oppose this application.
Well, they hired me to review the application, and I I I'm guessing they thought that I I would not be in favor of it, but I I told them I'd have to look at it first before I render an opinion.
Okay, so the the information that you have came from them and not from your view of the testimony by the persons who have proposed the application.
It was from the, it was from the exhibits and the review reports and the report of Mr. McDonough and his his live testimony.
Tell me what exhibits you looked at. Do you have a list of them?
Well, Mr. McDonough had five exhibits. There were color renderings. There was a an area map, a zoning map, a a map of the of the concept plan. I believe there were, there were five exhibits that he introduced.
You you indicated that the application mischaracterizes the use of the property. What information do you have about what the testimony was concerning the age of people who would occupy the independent living units?
Mr. McDonough testified that they would be, the the occupancy would be targeted to seniors.
Mr. McDonough, but how about the testimony of the witnesses who will actually operate the units? Testimony, did you?
I didn't hear it directly. I know that that the average age is older. Is typically older, but I have to concentrate on what the restrictions are on the project, and I have to rely on the same information essentially that Mr. that Mr. McDonough said in forming his opinion. And Mr. McDonough said that the independent units are going to be targeted for an older population.
That's what Mr. McDonough said, but you don't know what the testimony was from the witnesses who actually testified. Is that correct?
I I I'll repeat. I was not present during those earlier hearings.
By the way, with respect to with respect to who the occupants would be of the independent living units. What services would they receive? Do you know from the testimony that you listened to?
Well, they they don't have to have any services to start other than, you know, maintenance of the grounds, but there could be a menu.
If I told you that the witnesses testified to the contrary, would you know whether or not I was making an accurate statement?
Well, you'd have to tell me what the statement was, and then I would tell you whether it's accurate or not.
Another, well, let me take, take back this for a moment. You indicated that this is not a CCRC. A CCRC stands for what? Continuing Care Retirement Community, does it not?
That's correct.
And with respect to the CCRC, what makes it a community is that the various services have an interplay between the various types of residences. Is that not correct?
There there is a, the theory is that you age in place, and so that There, there is a rela-, uh, the theory is that you age in place and so that as you start out. Of, let's say, in an independent living facility, and let's say it's a, it's a owner occupied one. Your investment carries into the other stages of care on the same, in the same facility.
So, in this case, if the independent, if the residents of the independent. Living units had those opportunities. To, uh, age in place to go to assisted living, to go to memory care. That would meet the tests that you've just given us for a continuing care retirement community, would it not?
Mr. Kaplan, and Mr. Kaplan, I have to object to this line of questioning. The foundation is lacking and it's actually contrary to the very testimony provided by the applicant Les Stretch. And in this regard, Les Stretch testified directly, this is not a continuing care retirement community. It is not licensed to be a continuing. Care Retirement Facility. There is direct testimony that contradicts the question that Mr. Vogel is asking. And I'm gonna go so far as to say.
No, don't characterize.
May I please get my objection on the record, Mr. Vogel?
Uh, no, no, don't characterize my question because what you're doing is you're attempting to mislead the board.
No, I think, I think in the contrary, Mr. Vogel, it's you that is trying to mislead the board.
When you're done with your objection, I'll make my statement.
Right to the testimony, but Mr. Stretch actually testified that if somebody is renting in an individual. Cottage, they are not guaranteed, excuse me, Mr. Vogel.
If he's making an objection to the question, maybe have a ruling. My question was very simple.
Counsel, if you could please stop talking. Stop talking over each other, counsel. It's not, it's not helpful.
Very clearly.
Mr. Bryce, can you finish and then?
Then what Mr. Bryce said was that.
And, and as a matter of fact.
Not have the same characteristics of a CCRC. Because of the interplay between the two. I'll let the question and the answer stand as I've asked it. You recognize the, you're not that the, um. Assisted living. Beds have a ten percent requirement for Medicaid beds, do you not?
I already testified to that.
Yes. And when you, uh, indicated that, uh, twenty percent. Of affordable housing, it talked about Mr. Chadwick. Do you know what representations were made to the board with respect to affordable housing?
Uh, I am not aware of a representation. I know that, that in, in, uh, Mr. Chadwick's review. Uh, his, his memo review, he said that the applicant, at least at that stage, had not indicated whether they would comply with the twenty percent.
That's all you saw that if there was a statement on the record. To the effect that the applicant would comply with whatever the requirement is for affordable housing. You wouldn't know whether that's correct or not correct, would you?
I wouldn't know whether that's correct or not correct. I just looked at Mr. Chadwick's. And, uh, memo and, and I note that, uh, Mr. McDonough did not. Reference that characteristic in his testimony.
As a planner, Mr. Uh, Steck, do you testify before boards of adjustment on behalf of applications?
Yes.
What is the purpose of a board of adjustment?
Uh, it's to analyze the evidence to see if there is. Statutorily appropriate or, or, uh, legally based testimony. That would warrant the granting of certain relief.
And then the board of, does, does not the, a board of adjustment exist for purposes where the master plan? Does not particularly provide for a specific piece of property?
That's part of the proofs the, that the applicant has. Uh, to, to demonstrate that it is not substantially detrimental or doesn't substantially impair the master plan.
So you've been, you've characterized this property as, uh, as being in a residential zone. Adjacent to, um, I believe you said eighteen single family homes.
The property abuts eighteen single family homes.
But it is bounded on two sides at least, is it not? By, uh, institutional use as a church and a high school.
Well, I, first of all, I started talking about the whole property. And I did mention the high school is to the rear, but there is substantial buffering and a grade change. So it's fairly ins- insulated, uh, from that high school property. And I did mention across the street, there are also single family homes.
The property has to the rear of the high school, does it not?
To the rear is the high school, not single family homes, but the bulk.
And to the front is churches, there not?
Well, yes, if, once it's subdivided, it will abut the church, but I'm talking about the chara- characteristics of the entire property. And the predominant border is single family use.
Well, let's take a look at this property. This application proposes access to the property from what street?
From Littleton.
And where does the access through Littleton get to the rear of this property?
Where does the, I don't understand your question.
Well, how do you get from Littleton past the church into this rear portion of the property?
Well, there, there are two driveways on the concept plan, but as you know, it's only a concept plan. But at least as illustrated, uh, you drive through the church property.
And there is, is there frontage for the rear property without going through the church property?
Well, it, when this application started, as you know, there was an, there was a connection, uh, to the adjacent road. I believe it was Rita to the south, but it seems like the applicant abandoned that, uh, connection, uh, as the application proceeded.
Yes, that was, that, that, that is accurate. So where, where is the access now from Littleton Road? Is it not through the church?
I just said that. It's through the church.
Is there any other front, frontage for this property, uh, this ten acres, other than through the church?
Well, the back is twelve point three four acres and the only access would be through the church, although there would have to be obviously some relief. Because subdivisions are required, uh, to be, to front on a public street and that rear lot would not front on a public street.
That, that's a different issue. Let's, let's take a look at this. Uh, from what you've just said, then, if, if the property doesn't have frontage on the front, on, on, um. On an approved street, you could not build eleven houses on this property, could you?
Well, when this application started, there was part of this property had frontage on, on Rita, so that, that could have been a, a road access.
But that doesn't exist anymore, does it?
Well, I, I don't know if, if you still have a own or contract to purchase, but. That would be one way clearly to develop this property. And again, the original. Application as filed, uh, did have frontage on that street.
No, that, that was a function of the people on Rita who objected to it. So the applicant, in an effort to ameliorate it, went through the church property, did it not?
Well, that's, that was the choice of the applicant, but the, 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 the issue is. If a single family development were being proposed, I'm not sure the neighbors would object to it on Rita.
Well, you would have to, there is no frontage on Rita to get into this property presently, is there?
Well, i- if, if that lot, uh, twenty-one Rita was still owned or under contract, there is frontage.
There is no frontage, is there, for this property?
Under the current concept plan, that's correct, but as originally proposed, there was frontage.
No, as originally proposed, there was the purchase of a home. Was that not true?
Yes, but that provides frontage for the development.
So in or, in order to develop this property, uh, with, uh, to gain access through Rita. You would have to purchase a single family home. As it sits now, it does not have frontage on, on Rita.
Well, I don't know if the home is still owned or not, but you're right. But, uh, all I can say is the applicant had the capability. To access on Rita, uh, when this application was initially filed.
So let me ask you a question. With respect to CICA, you, you're, you're aware of, uh, the test that CICA imposes, do you not?
Yes, the four-step test.
Yes. That gives this board the opportunity to impose restrictions. Uh, to ameliorate any negative, uh, aspects of an application. Is that not correct?
That's the third step.
Let me ask you, um, when you made this characterization that. These, uh, eighteen homes that are on Rita that are. Uh, are adjacent to the site, you said there could, you, I, I think the word you used. You didn't feel that there could be, um, any imposition of requirements that would. Isolate this use from those homes.
In my, looking at the concept plan because of the density being proposed. And looking at the, the, the layout, and again, it could change, but. There are certain constraints because of the number of units, uh, that are being proposed. And in my opinion, it would be difficult to, to insulate those homes from the land use effects of this development.
Did you look at the difference in elevations between the properties?
I didn't look, uh, at the individual elevations. I did mention when I was back, uh, at the high school, that it was fairly isolated because of the difference in elevation. But it, looking at the concept plan, um, there are houses. Well, there's parking, there's roadways, um, that are, you know, fairly close, uh, to the exterior property lines. Again, we don't know exactly what a site plan, uh, an engineered site plan would show. But for example, there's a detention basin on the southern side. Which clearly is going to, um, eliminate most vegetation there. So the way I'm looking at this, and again, it's just a concept plan, that because of the intensity of use proposed. In my opinion, it would be difficult to, uh, ameliorate the negative aspects of this project.
But, but, but you, you did not take a look at the difference in elevations or the heights of the structures, did you?
I, well, you don't have a, you don't have a, a, uh, an engineered site plan, so that information is not available.
And you didn't listen to the testimony of Mr. Testaurus, the engineer, when he testified in that regard, did you?
Uh, I, I was not present when he testified, but I did, uh, walk the property and I walked the surrounding area. And again, uh, while a concept plan is proposed. That, the, 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 uh, future, if this is approved, subject to site plan approval. The, the future development, uh, could be completely different. But the, the issue that comes to me is that the, the spread because of the density proposed. Would be difficult to handle, uh, with respect to the surrounding single family homes.
You said, um. You, you said that the application, if approved for variance, could change from what is proposed?
Yeah, it, it, there's no site plan that's before this board. And so that the concept plan, um, is not a site plan, uh, it doesn't. It doesn't freeze the nature of the development.
It certainly does freeze the, the nature of the development with respect to the use, does it not?
Well, it, 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 you, we know what use is being proposed. Um, and we know the number of units that are being proposed and divided into three categories. So that by its very nature, talks about the intensity, how much spread this has to be.
Well, you talked about the cottages. If the cottages were proposed, are you now saying there may not be any cottages?
No, I'm saying that I looked at the concept plan because there, you know, up to a hundred and fifty-six total units being proposed. And because of that number of units, and it is so much over in density from what the master plan. Recommended that, in my opinion, there will be negative consequences that cannot be remedied. By simple site plan manipulation.
But you don't, you don't know that because you haven't seen a site plan?
Well, that, that is not part of this application, but I made a judgment. Based on the concept plan and the number of units that are being proposed.
You made a judgment based on not having heard the engineering testimony or, uh, or the, uh, architectural testimony that was proposed.
But there, but the, the, the application is not bound to any site plan at the moment. So while that's a factor in giving coloration to the use variance. In my, my understanding is because you chose to bifurcate the application, the site plan is not locked in.
Mr., we're not talking about site plan now.
That's what I just said, that, that the site plan can change.
Peter, Peter, I've been down this road with you before. I know how you, you don't like me to finish my questions. Just let me finish my question. We recognize this is not a site plan. Are you telling this board? That if the testimony by the engineer and the architects, that the heights of the cottages or any of the structures. Were at a certain level, that then we could come back and have structures at a different level?
The. It, that's, that's not clear at the moment, because while, while, it's, while some repris- representation was made. Is my, it's my understanding that the applicant at this point is only asking for a use variance. It's not asking for any other types of relief.
Pe- Peter, you know that if, on an application for a bifurcated use variance. If the testimony is that the proposed structure is of a certain height. Set back a certain amount of, from the, uh, from the property line. That if the variance is granted, the applicant can't then come back and change the setback and the heights. You're aware of that, are you not?
That's not necessarily the case. It depends what the resolution says of approval. And it depends what the applicant is asking for. If, if you're suggesting. That the applicant could not come in, for example, with a taller building and maybe just a C variance. At the time of site plan approval, that's possible.
It's not po-, well, Peter, let me ask you this. If this is a use variance predicated upon the testimony that was put on the record. And the engineer testified with respect to heights, sightlines. And, and, uh, buffers, that your position is. That that testimony, uh, can be disregarded when site plan is brought before a board?
I, I'm saying that the, I don't believe the applicant is frozen because to the plan, because this is only a concept plan. When final engineering is done, uh, you know, maybe the detention basin has to be larger. There are things that, that, that change. Now, I understand when, if, when you come back for a site plan. A concept plan is what it is. It, it's, it's a plan that's not based on fine-tune engineering. And I understand that the negative criteria are still there when you come in for a site plan. But my understanding of the process is you are not seeking site plan approval at this time. So that the concept plan that's presented is not necessarily what will appear in the future if this a- application is approved at this stage.
Where did you come up with the com- uh, comment that this is a concept plan?
Well, it's called a variance plan, but because.
There's a difference between a variance plan and a concept plan, is it not?
What is clear is it's not a site plan because you're not asking for site plan approval.
But it's a variance.
Can I just interrupt for one second? I, I feel like, I understand what you're doing. But I feel like we've been going in a circle for twenty minutes here. And we're, we have not taken a break. We're gonna have a hard ten o'clock stop on this tonight, so that's twenty minutes. You might wanna continue and, you're across and, and cover other subjects.
Well, I have a witness who never listened to the testimony and has reached conclusions based upon what his clients told him. And he calls this.
Heard that several times tonight. We, uh, uh, you've said that multiple times. I don't know how many other ways you, you want to ask or, or prove that.
Mr. Chair, I got a question to Mr. Vogel's light of questioning. As I look at, as, as I look at Mr. Textorius's, uh, my notes, Mr. Textorius's testimony. Uh, so are you saying, Mr. Vogel, that everything that Mr. Textorus said in his testimony on or about October thirteenth, um, um, is, is all locked in stone, if you will, for lack of a better term? In my notes, I, I have multiple references about everything being conceptual, including the lighting plan, landscaping, um. So, so are my notes wrong?
I don't know what's, whether your notes are wrong or right because I haven't looked at them, but I can tell you this. There is a difference between a site plan when it talks about saying...
I know what a difference between a site plan is. I'm, I'm looking at my notes where we reference sixteen feet high LED and amenities in the parking lot. Conceptual light plan. And then further down in my notes, Mr. Vogel, I have consensual landscaping, talking about the buffering along the residential property, and that we would be, uh, lower grade than the single-family homes, but did not propose the analysis. Are my notes wrong based on your back and forth?
I haven't looked at your notes, and if you let me answer, if you let me answer you...
Go ahead, Mr. Vogel.
Can I answer you?
Yes, I said go ahead.
Thank you. When it comes to lighting or the, or the size of a detention basin, uh, or where, what particular plantings are in a given place, they are part of site plan. Where the testimony on a variance is as to the height of buildings, as to setbacks, and those are specific items, and those are stated and testified to, those are components of the application which cannot be changed on site plan.
I understood that part of that.
Your notes are, your notes are correct with respect to lighting. Your notes are correct with respect to landscaping. Those are all items which your board can look at. But with respect to what we testify to as to height and setback...
There are aspects to this that are in, still in conceptual, uh, standing, correct? I, obviously, obviously not the setbacks, like you said, and not the height. But there are aspects to Mr. Textorus's testimony that are still conceptual. Am I, do, do I have that correct?
We, we filed with you a variance, a conceptual plan, and there's a difference, and whether or not Mr. Spec recognizes it or not, there's a difference between a concept plan and a variance plan.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not even addressing...
You didn't really answer her question. Everyone's sidestepping here in the last hour.
Everybody's doing a nice dance. Again, um, during Mr. Textorus's testimony on October thirteenth, there were multiple references to aspects of this. And again, to your point, maybe not the height, maybe not the setback, but multiple references to components that are still in the conceptual phase. I mean, and that would be understandable, right? Because this is, this is bifurcated. We're not, we're not, that's not what's before us tonight.
That's right.
That's all I have to say.
Point, the only point that I was attempting to make with Mr. Steck was that while it is not a site plan, there are specifics to which we are married, which we testify to, and those are essential facts. Those are where the buildings are located, the height of the buildings, the setbacks, those type of things, certainly...
You're not married to everything that Mr. Textorus covered on or about October thirteenth. I just want a simple yes or no. I don't, that's all it is.
It's no, he said that three times, Nancy, come on.
Hey, Dave, Dave, stay out of it. It's not your question. Thank you.
So the question, I, I, I think I indicated before I answered...
That's it. Thank you very much.
Your notes are correct when it talks about landscaping, when it talks about lighting, those are all aspects that abide, uh, site plan approval. But we are married to the heights that we talked about.
Thank you, Mr. Vogel. Thank you, Mr. Vogel. You answered it.
Okay.
Thank you.
You have fifteen minutes, Mr. Vogel.
I have fifteen minutes. Well, let's see if I can do it real quick. Yeah, I, I, I'm just gonna use a word, Mr. Steck, that you said. You said the fundamental problem is this is not a CCRC. College students eighteen years old could reside in the, uh, IL units. I- i- is that really your testimony this evening? Are you telling this board that your expectation is, and your view of this application, is that there are gonna be eighteen-year-olds living in the independent living units?
Mr. Steck has unmuted himself.
Have we lost Peter?
I just unmuted him.
I'm sorry?
I'm unmuting him, and he, he's continually muting himself.
Can you hear me now? Can I, can I be heard?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I, I apologize. Um, my testimony is that the occupants of the cottages are not limited to, for starters, sixty-two years old and older. That's a defined term in the municipal land use law. So you can't refer to those units as senior living units because they could be occupied, for example, by, uh, people fifty-five years and older. So this is not a senior project. And I emphasize that because there is no municipal land use law purpose in the NJSA forty fifty-five D dash two that encourages age-restricted housing. One of the purposes is senior housing, sixty-two years and older. Uh, but that's a defined term in the municipal land use law. So there's no public purpose advanced by having a fifty-five-year-old person in the independent, uh, living units.
And so, under CCAC, the board, if it wanted to impose a limit with respect to the IL units, it could do that, could it not?
Uh, it can, the, under CCAC, it can, uh, impose reasonable restrictions, but I'm analyzing the application as it's being presented.
Well, you don't know how it's presented because you don't know what the testimony was on behalf of the application.
Uh, I know, and I, my knowledge is from the evidence that was presented primarily by Mr. McDonough. I presume that he presented accurate testimony.
Well, accurate testimony, but not, he didn't, as a planner, you don't recap every witness who preceded you, do you, when you testify?
The, the, the answer is that Mr. McDonough, I think, admits that there is not a, a age requirement other than no, you know, children under eighteen in the project. That's what he referenced this evening, uh, in his testimony.
And that's all, that's all that you're, that's all that you're testifying to is to what Mr. McDonough, what you heard Mr. McDonough say either tonight or, uh, back in March?
And he, and his report and the review reports that were done by the municipality engineer and planner, and again, my conversations with the applicant.
Have you ever testified on behalf of an inherently beneficial use?
Yes.
Uh, on those occasions when you testified, did you submit reports to the board or testify as to what the components of an inherently beneficial use was?
Um, I don't always submit reports, but I understand what the CCAC standards are.
Well, describe to the board what, what an inherently beneficial use is under the statute.
Well, the municipal land use law, um, has a definition, and I'll read it into the record in the definition section. And it says, and I'm reading from NJSA forty fifty-five D dash four, inherently beneficial use means a use which is universally considered of value to the community because it fundamentally serves the public good and promotes the general welfare. Such a use includes, but is not limited to, a hospital, school, childcare center, group home, or a wind, solar, or photovoltaic energy facility or structure.
Um, inherently beneficial uses have been applied, have they not, to CCRCs?
Uh, I'm not aware of a case where that was, uh, I'm not aware of a, a higher-level case where that was the case.
You're not familiar with the, with the decision in Jbar?
That was before a CCRC existed. That Jbar in West Orange was about congregant care associated with the nursing home. Uh, CCRCs did not exist when that case, uh, occurred.
Or is not, is not the, um, the type of use in Jbar consistent with what a CCRC is?
Uh, no, there's no independent living, uh, in, in, in the Jbar case.
Or is it your, your testimony before this board that there was no independent living in Jbar?
Correct.
And, uh, that's, you predicate your opinion based upon your understanding of Jbar?
Yes.
Well, we'll address Jbar when it comes to, with respect to the law, um. We indicate, I, I think you, on, on several occasions, you, you use the word mischaracterization. You say, this project is mischaracterized. Well, before you raise the issue of a CCRC, was, was this application ever proposed by any witness to have been a CCRC?
No.
Okay. Um, when, when CCRCs have been determined to be an inherently beneficial use, does the, does the...
I object. It assumes a fact not in evidence. The, the witness actually testified. He's not aware of any CCRC that has been deemed an inherently beneficial use. And the question assumes that fact.
I'm sorry? Can I finish my question?
Uh, if you restate it, Mr. Vogel, because unless you can demonstrate a case where a CCRC has been deemed an inherently beneficial use, your question makes no sense.
Just let me finish my question. It's a very simple, direct question. When, when, and I, I'll tell you what, I'll, I'll, I'll rephrase the question. When examining an inherently beneficial use, based upon the statute you've just read, uh, for the benefit of the board, are the components of that use the factors to be considered as to whether or not the proposal is inherently beneficial under the statute?
Yes.
So that if I took all of the components that are in this application and made the argument that it was, that it amounts to an inherently beneficial use, and you took the contrary view that those components do not equal an inherently beneficial use, that would be a disagreement as to what the statute means, is it not?
No, it's a fact-sensitive situation as the Princeton Medical, uh, Center case, uh, indicated.
Okay, well, in Princeton Medical, uh, the board found an inherently beneficial use for back office, did it not?
It, it said that there was an inherent connection, uh, between those offices and the parent hospital use, use. And it's, again, it's a fact-sensitive situation.
Okay, so if we have a fact-sensitive situation with respect to the connection between an inherent, a portion of a use that's obviously inherently beneficial and another portion, the total project, as in Princeton, could be determined to be an inherently beneficial use?
Well, in the Princeton case, that's correct, but these whole, this is a whole different set of facts. This doesn't involve a hospital.
No, of course not. That was a hospital. Assisted living, in this case, is inherently beneficial. Has it not been determined to be inherently beneficial?
I believe that assisted living would be considered inherently beneficial.
And, and I, you believe that memory care would also be inherently beneficial?
Yes.
And so in the Princeton case, where the hospital was determined to be inherently beneficial, the court concluded that offices supporting, uh, the hospital, uh, fell within the parameter of an inherently beneficial use?
Based on that set of facts, correct.
And so there can be a set of facts where a function of a site, which in and of itself separately would not be an inherently beneficial use, can as an adjunct be part of the inherently beneficial use?
That, that's a possibility depending upon the facts.
I have no further questions. Thank you.
This would be a good time to, uh, suspend the meeting. Nora, is there, uh, when's the next date we can carry this to?
Mr. Kaplan, can I just do one quick redirect?
You got three more questions? According to the clock on my computer.
It will, it will literally be one question, sir. Mr. Steck, you still there?
Yes, I am.
There was just a discussion that you had regarding, um, the case, uh, Princeton Medical Center, correct?
Yes.
And you linked that with a hospital and back office, correct?
Yes.
As part of the CCAC test, is it not part of the evaluation that the public interest at stake has to be evaluated? And if that's so, is there a difference between a public interest in a hospital and a for-profit assisted living?
Uh, there is a difference. Obviously, a, a hospital is, is, uh, is much higher up on the scale of inherently beneficial uses. Um, this facility is not as high up as a, a hospital, and indeed, uh, the, um, independent living, again, depending upon whether the connections are artificial or not, may not, in my opinion, share the inherently beneficial status.
Thank you very much, sir. I have no further questions.
Well, since we're not at, at ten o'clock, let me just, and I won't go any further than addressing what was just asked by Mr. Bryce.
Just hold on one second. Mr. King, is this back and forth permissible?
Uh, yes, you can allow it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stay in the same realm. I'm not gonna reopen.
Nine fifty-eight and thirty seconds.
In, in, um, in the Princeton case, the hospital was inherently beneficial, correct?
Yes.
And in Princeton, they found that offices, although not inherently beneficial on their own, uh, because of their integration with the hospital, uh, that, that fell under the same penumbra as an inherently beneficial use, right?
Based on those set of facts, correct.
Right. In this application, you've agreed previously that both assisted living and memory care are inherently beneficial uses?
Yes.
No further questions. Thank you.
You had forty seconds left you could have played with. Um, okay.
So, so just, just for the record, so this, so Mr. Bryce, you have no more witnesses, correct?
Uh, no, Mr. King, I have no further witnesses that I anticipate to call at this time. This witness would just be subject to further examination by the public.
That's correct. So, so essentially where we are now, we would, we would allow members of the public who are not represented by Mr. Bryce to ask any questions of, of this witness. And then, uh, there, I guess there would be summation and, um, there'd be a vote. And any, uh, member who has not, um, been at one of the meetings, you would have to review any tape. I think everyone has been at these meetings, but you would have to review the, um, tape and sign the affidavit that you did listen to in order to vote. And, um, uh, Mr. Chairman, do you wanna try to get a date in which to, uh, res- reschedule?
Yep.
Nora, what do you have?
Yeah, great. Uh, I can get you in September twenty-first. This meeting will be in person.
September twenty-first?
Correct. Correct.
Um, we're we're continuing on Zoom?
No, incorrect. It will be in Town Hall in person.
Okay.
Do we have to do anything with notice?
No, it's being publicly announced.
Do you need an extension?
The chairman said we need an extension.
Mister Vogel, you would grant all extensions to the September twenty first twenty twenty two, correct?
Correct.
September thirtieth, okay?
No.
Mister Mister Hurricane is the chairman is basically saying bring it further just in case.
Just in case. He says a hurricane or something.
So you'd grant it to the thirtieth, Mister Vogel?
Say say that again.
You'd grant to up to September thirtieth, a little bit past the twenty first, just in case there's a hurricane or, you know, storm or something.
Not a problem. Okay, yes.
And and just to be clear, at that meeting, that's when the we're gonna pick off pick up where the public can give comment, correct?
Yeah, they can give testimony for, well, they can actually ask questions of Mister Bryce's witness. And then at that point in time, then the other members could provide testimony for or against.
Yep.
Mister Bryce's witness has to be there or available.
Yes.
That's Peter's turn.
I I am available. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Okay. I don't think there's any further business.
Before that occurs, Mister, I would appreciate it if Miss Jolie would announce to the public the adjourned date so there's no question with respect to notification.
Okay.
The application is being carried to September twenty first twenty twenty two at seven thirty PM. The applicant granted an extension to the end of September, the thirtieth. There'll be no further notice. And the meeting will be held in person in Town Hall.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
Vote by.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Have a good night.